School District Board of Trustees to Order. A quorum of board members is present. This meeting has been duly called and a notice of the meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Please rise for a moment of silent prayer or meditation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance and Honors to the Flag, Texas Flag. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one community.
Thank you all for joining us tonight. We are absent one of our key members and that's Dr. Battershell. She was already scheduled for vacation so she won't be joining us at this time. But we are going to go ahead and get started with interviewing our first search firm and that's going to be Tasby. Thank you. Representative, whichever would like to come up and start that. We'll let you go ahead and present and then we'll ask our questions if any at the end.
Sure. It's good to be here with you. I'm Butch Felkner with Texas Association of School Boards and I've been with Tasby twelve and a half years and have conducted many superintendent searches over those twelve and a half years because that's all we do is the superintendent search process. With me today is Mr. Jack Dameron and Jack is your field service rep who calls on your district. He and other colleagues around the state of Texas actually are the ones that physically walk into every school district in the state of Texas three to four times a year and visit with staff and superintendents there. So we are the only search firm in the state of Texas that has a personal working knowledge of every single superintendent in the state of Texas. No other search firm can claim that. So we're pretty happy with that and we're happy with the fact that we have that knowledge and expertise that goes with us. The other thing that we have is that we have a good process that Dr. Strauss will be coming shortly to tell you about and it's worked for many, many years and a lot of our folks who apply through us trust our process and so that's a good thing. And we have a lot of good quality superintendents and aspiring superintendents that like the process because they trust what we do, because we're transparent, we're open with them and we're honest with them. So but we're in this to help the school board. We're not in it to get a good old boy or a friend or a job. We're here to look out for the school board because that's who we work for and that is you. So without further ado, I'll introduce Dr. Marion Strauss and she can tell you about what our process is all about.
Good evening. First of all, thank you for inviting us to present tonight. We are thrilled to be here. I think one of the main things that Butch already mentioned is that when you do a search with Tasby, with ESS, the board is in charge. We represent you. You're part of our organization and we represent your best interests. So you're in charge and we often change or tweak our process based on what boards really want to see happen. We have, our process works and most of the time it's pretty consistent, but I will tell you if there's anything that you want to customize, we are willing and able to do that. We're also the most experienced in the state. I think Butch mentioned that and the fact that we know every applicant is something that you won't find very often. You get the whole team with Tasby. We're just one division. You get the field service team, which is what Jack is part of, and then also you, we will bring you the latest salary and benefits information for superintendents in your size district as well as all of the superintendents in Region 12 so that you can compare and see exactly where it is that you want to fall. We will assist you with that as well. We answer any questions. You get our legal team to help in any way and so with Tasby you get everyone. We have an electronic application process so there is no paper involved. Everything we do is over a secure site. Our applicants apply with us and then you, after the search closes, you receive all of them electronically. We give you a secure login and password and then you go in and we believe it's best if you see all the applicants. However, there will probably be a number of applicants and you may decide that you only want to see the superintendent, sitting superintendents and maybe assistant superintendents or deputy superintendents. And we can make, we can customize that in any way that you would like. If you would like for all the others to go away, you just have to tell us. Otherwise, you'll see everyone from principals, central office directors, and then assistant superintendents and superintendents. And we organize those for you so that you can also decide where you want to, where you want to cut it off. So they're organized by experience for you when you receive them. We're going to advertise both in the state and nationally. With Tasby, every, all of our sister organizations throughout the United States pick up all of our searches at no additional charge to you. So you will have a national search and you will have out-of-state candidates and that is entirely, that's something that you evaluate. We bring information about every candidate that applies. So we are going to tell you the things that we know that are facts about the, about the candidates that apply for your position. And we do that during the process where we help you narrow those down to the ones you're going to, to the ones you're going to interview. So we're going to continuously be here. We're going to help not put any more work on Connie or anyone else in central office because we know they have enough work to do. So we're going to have all the wording for all the postings. We're going to have press releases and we're going to help in that way every, throughout the search. We're always, and I know I've seen lots of you at SLI and convention and every year, we're always there after the search. We don't go away. Tasby doesn't go away. I think the thing that's most rewarding for Mr. Felkner and I is to see boards at those, at convention, at whatever, that have just completed a very successful search and are thrilled with what's going on. And then to see them again a year or two later and it's still, it's still that way. So that is what we strive to do. We look at your district. We know that every district in the state of Texas is different and there's a culture here in Belton that I know you're all very proud of and we're going to work very hard to find the person that's going to fit with the seven of you and understand and be part of that culture and the community. So we're going to engage your community, which I know is probably important to you. We have an online web-based survey that we put on your district's webpage and that will stay up for several weeks and then we compile a report and give you all of the responses that came in through the survey. We will also be here in person to talk to your community and your staff, your administrators. We will talk to everyone that you feel is important and who we recommend will come in for a day or so, maybe more, and sit down with those groups and, and talk to them and ask them what's going, what's going well in the district? What are the concerns that they have about things in the district? And then what it is that they want in their next leader? What are those characteristics that are important to those groups in the next, in their next superintendent? So we ask that this be a confidential search. All of our boards sign a confidentiality oath because our candidates trust us that it is confidential and that we, we stress how important that is to the boards that we work with. Only one person is going to be sitting in that chair after we're finished. All the others have to go home to their, to their prospective districts. So we want to make sure that we protect them and that they feel comfortable with us in, in applying. We're going to assist you in developing the questions that you want to ask when it's time to do the interviews. We have a bank of questions that our attorneys have approved and so we will assist you in developing those or selecting from the ones that we already have. We will be here again throughout the entire search and with the meeting that you actually narrow the candidates, you get three hours of board credit. Also, after the search is over, within the first 90 days of you and your new superintendent, we have a transition session that we've added to our search. So in the last couple of years, we've added that transition session to make sure that you and your new superintendent take the time at the very beginning to sit down and talk about those things that are important to avoid the early bumps in the road. So we want you to sit down and talk to them about what you expect in the first 90 days, the first six months, and then how you're going to evaluate them at the end of the first year. And we do that through LTS. So usually Orin Moore, sometimes Phil Gore, and as close as this is, Phil might come in and actually do this, they will lead you through that transition process. And again, that is at no additional cost. It's part of our search and it's just their travel and expenses. We're going to be here until you're satisfied. If, if your superintendent leaves for any reason other than a family emergency, we come back and do the search at no cost, just travel, for two years. So we, that is our guarantee. We rarely, rarely have to use that guarantee. I'm not going to say it's never happened, but I can count on two fingers the times that I've worked with ESS and I've been with ESS for five years and so it rarely happens. You have lots of neighbors that we've done their search. We did Temple's search this last time, which another interesting point is if you have internal candidates, we treat them exactly as we do any other candidate. So when they apply, they go through the exact same process and then it's up, it's up to you with our guidance to determine whether they meet the, meet the qualifications and characteristics that you've set forth. So we have, always have internal, or many times we have internal candidates as well. But we've done, we did Temple and we did Liberty, I did Liberty Hill. We did Liberty Hill not too long ago. Academy, we just finished with Academy. So there are lots of searches in your area that, I know you know board members, so I would encourage you to talk to any board member that we've worked with. And if you hear something negative about it, then I would say, don't hire us. But we're very confident in, in what we do. So again, I'll let Butch summarize and, and then we'll take any questions that you have.
All right. Well, as mentioned, I think the value-added difference is what I said earlier is that we're the only search firm that has personal knowledge of every superintendent in the state of Texas and we share that if any of these folks apply with you, we will share that information with you at the appropriate time. And you know, we're going to be here to guide you. We're close. I'm just, I'm in Round Rock, so I'm not that far away. So that's a pretty comforting thing, so just to scoot up the highway, you know, but 35 can be its own obstacle sometimes, as you well do. And anyway, today it worked out pretty well. Anyway, it's good to be with you. We'll entertain any questions, Ms. Jordan, whatever you'd like to proceed.
Thank you. Thank you for that information. That's very helpful. I have a couple of questions and I know the board probably has some questions as well. You talked about the training, the 90, after 90 days at the end. Is that inclusive of your bottom line fee that you owe or charge for the board and the new superintendent?
Yes. The only expense is that it's the travel of the facilitator would be from Austin to here. That's the only expense it is.
So we would just be responsible for the travel?
Yeah. So that's, that would be the only thing. Outside that, usually if you do not use, use us, it's around $900 to do this, but since if, in a district that does use our service, it's the fees waived and it's just the expense of the, of the consultant coming up.
Okay. And then the other question I have right at the moment, I'll have some more. You talked about we'll have an entire team, including the legal team. Is there a specific person that will be in charge of, that would be in charge if we all were to hire you? A specific contact person that we would be dealing with as a board?
Both of us.
Both of you?
Dr. Strauss and myself will be the lead, lead as well as Jack will also be involved in this process. So you actually have a three-headed team, if you will.
Awesome. I'll open this to the board. Does any member of the board have a question? Go ahead, Ty.
Yes, thank y'all for coming this evening. Just a couple of questions here. This is, is this, in y'all's opinion, is this timing issue? Is it going to limit our ability to bring in the top candidates because it's the first semester, not the second semester?
You know, we get that question all the time. When is the best time to do a search? And there, this time, the fall searches, I believe, are the best time to do them and I'll, and I'll explain why. Superintendents, which Butch and I and Jack are all retired superintendents. Superintendents are super busy in the spring, getting budgets and, and getting all of the hires done and everything that has to happen in the spring. And then in the summer, people are out and about and then you're also getting schools started and, and you're really busy. About September 1, when all the kids are here and all the faculty's here, is when superintendents start looking around and saying, is this where, is this where I want to be or am I ready to move on to something else? Fall searches allow for a new superintendent to be in place early in the coming year so that they're involved in the budget preparation and they're involved in all the hiring that has to go on in the spring. So we, we have searches all year long. Summer is probably the least advantageous time to do it, where it ends in August because it's just an upheaval. But fall searches, I think, and we do a lot in the spring as well, but for a district this size, your budget process starts in January, I know. And so that allows that person to be here when that's all beginning.
That's, that's a good answer. I'm an old coach and I know that's kind of how we do it in the coaching world. I just didn't know if the superintendent would work out kind of the same way. Also, I know we, when we did our redistricting, you know, we redistricted everything this go-around, elementarys, junior highs, or middle schools and high, for two high schools. And we went through an exhaustive process. We had six public forum meetings just for that one issue alone. So I want to make sure that we work that, you know, not just come one day and meet with a few people. I think we need to consider, you know, having a few more of those type of things because we're just kind of used to it in our community.
That's good. And, and again, we're willing to do whatever it is. We're going to take your guidance as far as the community sessions are involved. We have our web-based survey, which would be up for several weeks, and some districts choose to just use that, knowing that people are really busy. If your community is one of those where people are involved and especially if it's a passionate topic, then we'll be here to listen to them.
And then my last question is just the, it was interesting to hear the, making this a national search. You know, Texas, we kind of have our own little way of thinking about things down there. Have y'all placed someone from out-of-state into the heart of Texas and how did that, how did that work out? We know how transplants are sometimes.
We have. Since I have been with Tasby, I've placed four superintendents from out-of-state. I've come here. We find, oh, I found over the years that the larger school districts tend to attract those more so simply because there are multiple layers below them and they're more the political figure that's out, you know, in the community doing the, the shaking hands and the kissing babies and all that kind of stuff. And so that's, you know, we, we find that more than the other. Districts below that in the neighborhood from, you know, 15 to 1,000 and below 10, we see higher, more in Texas than not. Texas is its own anomaly, if you will. I mean, it sits, you know, the, the testing, the finance and all those things are, you know, it's kind of convoluted. And so, you know, some of the superintendents in Texas, you know, have a better handle on those types of things. Now, of course, as Dr. Strauss said, you will get out-of-state applicants, you know, for the position. So, you know, those are, and those will be, you know, some are attractive.
Well, thank you. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you. Any other member have questions?
Go ahead, go ahead. I was reading your letter earlier. Did someone?
Go ahead.
Okay. I was reading your letter earlier today and you talked about 80% of the superintendents you've placed have been there for five years. So the opposite of that is 20% have been less than, have been there less than five years. What is the most common reason for that happening?
Dr. Strauss, you can add to this. What we find is some of the ones that tend to, are in small districts and tend to move to larger districts. They feel like that they've done as much as they can in a smaller district, so they want to go to a bigger district. Sometimes it's because they're family, they have kids, they want to expose them to more resources and avenues like that. It's rare that we find that it's because of money. Most of it's because of the location of the district. Sometimes it's because that, you know, one of the top reasons is board superintendent relations is why some superintendents leave. And so, you know, that, that does occur, unfortunately. We try to, you know, head that off at the pass, but you know, sometimes we can't. But we're, we're happy with the fact that, you know, that number, that 80% is still pretty strong.
So it happens more so in smaller districts as opposed to districts our size?
Correct.
Yes.
You told us about Academy, Liberty Hill and Temple. Can you provide us with references for school districts that have similar demographics as ours that we could contact about your services?
Of course. Of course. We'll, we'll be happy to do that.
Going back to the process, and Mr. Taggart touched on this just a moment ago, about engaging the community and determining, get a feel about what our culture is, is here in this district. Other than spending time here with, with staff and maybe some community involvement, what other methods do you go about by which you make that determination? That is our culture and find out what the community really wants here.
Well, there is so much information out on social media now and all of the other things that we can just skim and look at and your newspaper, which is, I read the Temple paper today, just watching the things that you celebrate as a district, I think is really important. And then any other information that we get as we talk to people, the most important thing we're going to do is gather those, those ideas that everyone wants to submit to us. And they're going to be pretty honest about what their concerns are. And when they do that, we often tell boards, you have to have a thick skin sometimes when you're reading this report because sometimes they know that, that this is hard for, and this is a time when there are difficult things going on. So I think just getting, being here, knowing people in the area, which we both do. Butch lives in Round Rock, I live in New Braunfels, but my son is the head coach in Georgetown at Eastview and so I am in this area all the time. And so I think it's important that, that we just learn as we go as well, but get a really good feel for it and talk to you. It's really important what you believe as a board and we would take that very seriously too. We usually meet with boards as, as a group, but we can certainly, we've met with boards as individuals, one-on-one as well.
How accessible will you be to us? Will both of you be to us? I mean, are you working with 50 other districts right now? I mean...
No, not 50. We never work with 50.
I know, I mean, I just threw the number out.
But we have, we have several searches going on, but I, I tend to think of this and, and it was one of the field service agents that said that because we get that question a lot. If, if you're doing other searches, how attentive can you be? Well, this is all we do. Butch and I do superintendent searches all year, every day, and I feel like we're specialists. And if you were going to a doctor, you wouldn't ask him, how many patients do you have in, in my particular, whatever it is that you're looking for. You want a specialist and you want someone that does it all the time and knows the people that are going to be interested in this position. And if the, there are people out there that you've seen present, say you're at convention and you see a superintendent present and you think that, that would be a great superintendent here, we don't hesitate to contact. You tell us, we contact those people. We contact who we believe would be a good fit, but also if the board has some ideas and know people in the area or outside of the area, we will contact them and, and encourage them to apply. We don't strong-arm anyone. We encourage them to take a look at it and apply.
Okay. I may have an additional question after someone else, but...
Janet, do you want to? You're good? Okay. Chris.
Hi. Thank you again for coming out. This is great. I've got maybe several questions here. And maybe to start out, you know, talking about the search, what do you think right now are the selling points for Belton ISD? Right? And so, you know, if you bumped into somebody yesterday, right, who was a possible candidate knowing you were coming up here, right, what is your story to them right now?
As far as Belton is concerned?
As far as Belton is concerned?
I think that both Butch and I and Jack have talked about this considerably in the last couple of weeks as we prepared for this. Talking to them about the successes, the, the successes that you've had, the things that are going on here, the fact that you're a fast-growth district. And I will tell you, if we could take every school district and put it up and down I-35, we'd have, we'd have thousands of applicants for it. But your location is so prime as far as attracting the very best candidates. And so I think just talking to them about the things that have gone on, the stability that's here is really important, the stability that's, that's been here, how your neighbors feel about you, which we, we know that as well. And then just being able to talk to those people that are interested and let them know. Anything else?
And I think, yeah, I think along with that is that what's surrounding you. Design, create, build. I think that's the vision that, you know, people are seeing about Belton. I think it's out there and so, you know, the drawing of candidates is not going to be an issue whatsoever. It's, I think the difficult part is getting the right, the right one for the position and that's, you know, that you're not, you know, we don't want to get someone here that's going to take you here. We want to go to the next level. And so that's where, where we are. And, you know, that was my challenge to the Academy board. Those seven folks had never been through a superintendent search and they were very anxious. And I said, listen, I haven't lost a board yet. I said, but we're going to take you. I said, I know your former superintendent, Kevin, was, was excellent and, but we're looking, we're looking for somebody that's going to go to the next level. And so that's, that's the challenge. And so they were, they had a very successful search. We're very pleased with, with that process.
Rosie has a follow-up to that.
So you were using the analogy of being a specialist, right? So, so if you go into a specialist's office, you'll want to hear the story that you, that you just told. The flip side of that is being aware of what some challenges might be as far as coming to Central Texas, coming to Belton. What, what would you tell us about that and how would you have us address that with a superintendent candidate?
I, I think there's challenges in every district and Belton would have its, has its challenges as well. I don't think there's a district we've been to that hasn't had challenges. I think what we're going to find out is over the, if we were hired, I think over the course of the next few months, we're going to be able to identify those more specifically. And when candidates begin to call us and say, hey, tell us about Belton, we're going to be able to speak to that honestly and openly and be able to share with them some of the challenges that we're seeing after we're starting listening and reading and knowing the culture and understanding this because we're, as I said, we're both from the Central Texas area. So we know the area pretty well. And so it's going to be, you know, exciting to find out what those specific challenges are. Now, you know, we could globally say, well, you know, with everybody, every school district in Texas is working with finance issues, you know, and things like that. But we're looking at more specific and things like that, you know, because once we get to the specific challenges, then that's when we can, you know, work with you to match candidates and things like that. We begin to eliminate candidates and begin to farm, you know, the... that. We begin to eliminate candidates and begin to farm, you know, the nucleus of candidates that need to be, you know, focused in on as you as a board. And so, I think that's going to help us more than anything.
Identifying the strengths are probably also going to be the challenges that come up as well, because not everyone can handle a fast-growth district. So, that's going to be something that we talk extensively about with, with candidates to, to find out if they've had any experience throughout their career in a fast-growth district or how they, how they feel about that and if they could handle it. I have something else in there. I think, I think that's just, you know, get, just doing the work and, and finding out what it is that your community expects. Because I know that's something that's at the top of all of your list is to make sure the community is involved.
All right, okay. I got more? Okay. All right. So, let's talk, let's dig into the process a little bit and, and just help me understand the process a little bit more concretely, right? So, so I heard that you've got an electronic application process and that's, you know, folks will be submitting online. And we ultimately would have access to all of the candidates that get submitted. But help me understand whittling down from all the candidates submitted to, you know, our final six or eight, right? Like, how, how do we get from everybody to, you know, a final group with, with you all?
Our process is that we send this, once the application deadline passes, the next day you'll receive the applicant information via email. It'll come in two different emails. One will be how to access the applicant information. The other one will be the actual applicant's information. It'll all be contained inside there. Then we give you around seven days to go over all that information and dissect all that material. And then we ask you to come up with six to eight to ten or whatever number of names and of candidates, why I thought this person warranted my attention. And so, on a specific day, as Dr. Strauss alluded to, we'll come in and we will sit with you because through those seven days as well, we're doing a lot of homework behind the scenes on every applicant that applies. So, we're going to have knowledge that you're not going to have. And we're going to share that with you when we come to this meeting together. And we're going to place, we're going to go around the room and we're going to say, okay, who was your six, seven, eight, or ten, whatever candidates that you really liked? And we're going to place them all on a board. And then we're going to discuss each one of those. And then you will begin, and we, once we share information with you on the good, the bad, and the ugly, then we're going to share, we'll narrow that group down through attrition and it'll just kind of narrow its way down to the ones that you want to interview.
Okay.
Now, I will say this. If we feel like that after we've been in your district quite a bit, and, and we know of a candidate that we feel like strongly about that matches what you're looking for and they didn't make it, then we're going to say, hey, help us understand why you didn't like this candidate. And I'll give you an example. I did a search in a district just north of Fort Worth, and I didn't know the candidate, if he walked in the door, I wouldn't know who he was. But based on what they said they were looking for and based on what we knew that he had done in his district, he not only met, but he exceeded what they were looking for. And I said, listen. And I told them the story. I said, listen, I wouldn't know the guy if he walked in, but what, what our research has done and what you're looking for, we must have missed it. And I, I just want to know how, you know, we missed it because we need to do a better job. And they said, well, let's talk about it. Long story short, he became their superintendent. He was there for seven years. So, he exceeded the, the five-year thing. So, you know, we're also going to bring candidates that we feel like match what you are looking for as well. And, and then we're going to tell you the ones that we feel like it might not be, need to consider as well.
So, do we have the ability to do some of that filtering before we get that list, right? Because the, the situation I don't want to be in is I don't want to have eighty-three or eighty-four candidates, right? And then have to look at eighty-three or eighty-four candidates, right? I mean, hopefully, we're going to get to know each other well enough that we can, we can cut half of those immediately, right? So, how do we get to there bef, you know, earlier in the, in the process? Is that possible?
It is possible. The only hiccup, if you will, is a lot of candidates will come into the system and a lot of candidates will come out of the system prior to the actual application deadline date. So, sometimes you get a false sense of who's actually applied until we get close to that deadline date. We see that happen a lot sometimes. It's very fluid through there and it moves. And now, some of the rock solids will be in there, but we won't know that until we get further down into the application process, if you will.
And I think we can help you with that. When, when you get the applications, we give you some recommendations about how to actually go through those. And through those, through that process, you can eliminate pretty quickly as well. And again, we can, we can limit, we can just send, if you just want to see sitting superintendents and assistant superintendents, we can do that. We, you just have to tell us that that's what you want, and then we'll make that happen.
Okay. Do you have a, what's the, your average length of search, right? So, we'll ask several of these that you've done. How long's it taken, right, to, to get to the end?
Actually, a hundred and twenty calendar days.
Okay.
From the planning meeting to the vote-to-hire meeting.
Okay.
Is the average. We've done some shorter than that and we've done some longer than that, but that's the average.
And back to the question, one more thing on that, on, on narrowing it. You will have a group of qualification and characteristic statements that will be embedded into the application. And every candidate's going to write a narrative as to what kind of experience they have in those areas. So, that is, that's somewhere that, that we see our boards go to at the very beginning, just to see if the experience is there in those things that were important to you as board members as far as Q and Cs are concerned. So, that's just one more avenue.
Yeah. Are there any, I don't know, like personality trait testing or anything like that? Like, do you incorporate any, anything like that into the process?
No, we do not. And mainly because there are seven personalities up here. And what you think is the, the personality trait that you want might not match what someone else wants on the board. But, you know, we, we, we meet with our, with our other cohorts throughout the United States. And there isn't, there, there aren't any states that are doing any kind of personality testing. I think the real personality test is when you get to see them and talk to them and then, and then you know.
Yeah. I think my, I just got one more and then I'll kind of head off. So, Dr. Faulkner, I think you mentioned trying to find somebody who's going to fit with us, right, fit with this group of seven in that chair, right? I mean, how, how are you going to know, how are you going to help us know that that's the right person to fit with us, right, the, the seven of us? How do we get to that?
Go ahead.
Well, the, I think the main thing is, is that once we get to know you better, you're, and you get to know us better, and we know the candidates well, we're going to be able to narrow that down. We've been pretty successful over the years on meeting with the boards and satisfying the, what the board's looking for as well as what the district is, is needing in their new superintendent. But it's also a part of, it's all a part of the whole process, you know, the, the culture. As we move in and we begin to understand the culture of the district and the challenges and, and, and the struggles and things like that that are going on as well as the strengths of the district. And then we begin to know you and your personalities and what you're looking for, it begins to take form. It takes a picture, if you will. And that's what, that's how the whole process plays itself out. And at the end of the day, you know, we work together to make sure that you're getting the right. And we don't stop until you say amen. And so, you know, that's, that's the whole, that's the whole thing.
All right, I lied. I had one more. All right, I'm sorry. I'm getting the gong from Sue here. What are the, maybe let's say, top three, right? What are the top three traits that you think we need to be looking for, right? Whether that's based on what you know about us, whether that's superintendents in general, whether, you know, whatever that is. How are you going to break that down? But what are the top couple of things that you really feel like we need to be zeroed in and locked in on?
Just having been around you with the little that I have tonight and then also seeing you out and about at, at convention and other places, I would say the top three things, and Butch can add his top three things, but I'm going to say someone that has experience in a district like yours and that is experiencing some of the same things that you're going through as far as growth is concerned. You're going to need someone that can fit into this community. And they're going to do that by being accessible, visible, and, and being good communicators. So, I think that's the other, the other part. And then, I think it's going to, I know that your faculty and staff is high caliber and that whoever this person is, is going to have to win their respect, but they need to be, they need to have that coming in where they have the experience and the know-how and the knowledge to have people say, wow, that, that was, that was a good hire. And this board took this seriously and they, they did find the best person. And I think that's, those are the things that, that are important. Anything else?
I would say, you know, as Dr. Strauss said, I would say somebody that's personable and, and approachable and somebody that, you know, can carry out the vision that's been set of moving forward, that can communicate that vision and also, you know, can enlist the stakeholders in the community and continue to maintain that trust that's been built there. And then be able to, you know, lead you forward. You, you have to have a good manager, but you also have a, have to have a visionary. And so, sometimes some people are more visionary than they are a manager. And you can be in the top of the tree looking out, seeing what's ahead, and then things are, you know, falling apart below you. So, you're going to have to have the best of both worlds there.
Awesome. Anyone else? Jen?
One more?
Just a couple of quick questions. You'd mentioned the applications that we'll be able to see, everybody that sends it in, that will have a period of time to review them before we whittle them down. If during that process, we were looking over those applications individually, and I have a question about one, what do I do from there?
You can contact either of us. You will have our contact information. And I will tell you that, you know, if you contact us, then we will also contact, you know, let the board president know that, you know, we've received this question and respond back. So, everybody knows that we're all on the same page. We don't want seven individual board members contacting us and nobody knows. Wait, wait a minute. That's, so we, that's how we, we work through. But you can contact us at any time. When I did the Sanger search, one of the board, the board president, you know what I liked about you guys? Is that the fact is I called you on Sunday when I had a problem and you were, you were available to talk to me. I said, only for you did I do that. No, but, you know, you can contact us at any time.
Another question. You'd mentioned the, I guess, the link to our website where the community can go in, do their input, and we can get some information through that. How are you going to drive, how do you drive traffic there if that's going to be one of our methods?
We work with your district to get that done. If you have a communications person at central office or anywhere, then we work with them to make sure that all of the parents know that it's there, how, in whatever way that you normally contact parents. If it's phone or, or notes or whatever it is, marquee, social media, all of the things that are available here in Belton that parents and faculty and staff go to, of course, the newspaper, any avenue that we can, we work with the district. And we do have, again, press releases saying, here's what's going on and here's a list of the meetings you can attend in person. And then here's where you go if you're not able to come in person to the district's webpage. And that link will be right there. And all of the responses come back to Tasby. And then we compile the report, both in person. You'll get all of the responses in person as well as all of the responses that are online.
And then one final question. Let's say we were to hire you and, and you, you've talked about the process and I understand that, but could you, from a ten-thousand-foot view, kind of walk me through, so you've been hired, next steps and what we would expect the steps to follow?
The, the first step that we would do is be meet with you and have a planning meeting, which would outline the search calendar and timeline. And so, that way, we would ask that you bring your business and personal calendars to that meeting so we could avoid dates that you already know or would be a conflict. Following that, inside that search process, inside that timeline, as Dr. Strauss alluded to, there will be the community involvement sessions. And we would identify dates that we would be here to conduct those as well as the online survey going on. Following that, you would receive the report. Following that would be the application deadline date. Following that would be the application review where we sit down with you and go over all the applicants with you. And then you determine which number you're going to bring in to apply. And after that, we, then you will narrow that group down from the number that you've interviewed to usually three to bring back for a second round of interviews. And then following those rounds, you will have a option to take a site visit. That would be three board members traveling to the candidate's home district, visiting with folks there. And then the following, that will be the naming of the lone finalist and then the twenty-one days and then vote to hire.
Thank you.
That's from the ten-thousand view there.
And then the transition session after?
After that.
Awesome. Any other questions? Janet? Okay. Well, thank you for answering all of our questions and giving us all that great information. Is there anything else you want to leave us with?
You have our packets and we're, we're ready to start whenever you're ready to start.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being, for letting us come.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Earlier, we had public comments on our agenda and I passed that by at this time. Connie, do we have anyone signed up for public comments? We do not. Okay. We have Ray and Associates here now. Ray and Associates, are you all here? Do you all like to come and present? Thank you for coming. We appreciate you.
Good evening.
Good evening. We'll just allow you all to present and then we'll ask any questions at the end if that's okay.
All right.
Hi, how are you? I wish I could reach you.
Hi. Manuel Alcozer.
How you doing, Mr. Rahm? Awesome. On behalf of the board.
Okay. Do you want the clicker or do you want him to click?
Are we ready?
You'll get started anytime you'd like. Good afternoon.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Well, good evening to each of you. Thank you for inviting us here tonight. We're with Ray and Associates. It's a national search firm, superintendent's search firm. There would've been, been over forty years, probably one of the oldest. And so, I'm one of the younger ones that just started not too long ago. So, but the owner's been at it for quite some time. First of all, I want to start by having Harold introduce himself and then I'll introduce myself and then we'll, we'll get with the presentation. Okay?
I hope most of you know who I am. I was superintendent of schools here in Belton from ninety-seven to two thousand and two. I consider Belton my home. I have deep roots here. I often say that if the board had known at the time how many relatives I had in Belton, they might not have hired me. And I still have people discovering who some of those relatives are. But my great-grandparents came to Sparta in eighteen seventy-three and settled on the Cowhouse Creek. And so, that's the Herbert side of my family. The Rahm side of my family came to Copper's Cove about the same time. And that's on the Rahm side. My granddad's place was north of Colleen. In nineteen forty-two, the federal government came along and said, we need your property. You can either take this money and leave or you can just leave. And so, I And so I grew up in Florence, Texas. I've had cousins that have come through here on, on both sides of my family. I felt like it was a real pleasure for me and an honor for me to be able to serve as superintendent here in Belton and it, it was a great experience and I think we accomplished a lot during the time that I was here. I will say that I hired the, the last two superintendents that you have had, they were my principals during the time that I was here. After I had left Belton, I thought I was through. I had 25 years in as superintendent and in '07, I went to Grossbeck to be there for three months and ended up staying 11 more years. Since that time, I'm doing some search, I've joined Ray and Associates. I joined them because I think they're one of the very best in the searches. They have the staff at the office and they have a system that really allows us to find the best quality candidates that we can find for you and I'm going to tell you, this is like a marriage. There has to be the right chemistry and we will bring you a lot of candidates that you can make that choice from, but we will guarantee you that we will bring you some of the very best. And again, they have the staff to handle this, they have the process and that's part of the reason that I started working with them and I think that you'll find that we have an excellent program that will help you find the very best candidates. There will be that candidate that will fit in here in Belton.
My name is Robert Alfato, retired superintendent from Texas. After about 31 years in Texas, I left and what possessed me to do something like this, I do not know, but I did go and became a regional superintendent in Las Vegas. My wife loved every minute of it and it's the fifth largest school district in the country. Very different from Texas, I'll tell you. As we've been out there working with, with people over the last few years, I come to find out that many states are, are very different, very different from Texas. And so, over the course of the last five years or six years that I've been with Ray and Associates, we've made some changes. And one of the things that we added was that we have now probably the only state with a national firm that has a Texas division. And so, we're Texans, working in Texas and so we understand the system. We understand the issues statewide and nationally. As we go through this presentation, I was, we were debating whether we should take you through the, the big presentation or the small presentation. So what I'm going to do is, because they put up the big one, I'm going to go through it quite rapidly because I want to come back and have a conversation with you. We want to have a conversation, we want to talk about what it is that's on your mind because this probably is one of the most important things that you're going to do, decisions that you're going to make, if not the most important. So we want to have plenty of time to, to talk about that. The process is, is very similar to, to the other agencies, but I think that what sets us apart is the fact that we are, had over 40 years of experience with over 70, what we call associates, across the country. I think we've got about seven of them here in Texas, but Harold and I, because we live so close, I live down the street in Hutto and Harold, of course, lives here and so because we live so close, we would be ready to respond, to be here, it's only a jump, skip and a hop away. So we want to make sure we're available. But our experience speaks for itself. What you have here in front of you is a very comprehensive proposal. It, it answers all of your questions. It's got so much information in there, sometimes I, I tell the, our, our company president, why do we include so much information is we're going to come back and talk a lot about that. And for us, it's, it's better to have, like I mentioned a while ago, a conversation. But we've been around since 1975, we have associates all over the, the country, 40% of our associates are women or minorities and so we provide different perspectives to boards. The average number of completed candidate's applications is roughly around 70. And, and even though a district this size, from my experience, you're going to see probably maybe somewhere between 100 to 125 people apply of which 70 to 75 will probably complete the application. But the thing that's different about this is that we're not going to bring you 85 applications for you to decipher and go through unless that's what you want to do. But our job is to make sure that the people that apply are vetted according to the profile that you as board members first and secondly, as a community, decide what are the attributes and skillsets that you want to see in your next superintendent. Once we collect that information from you as we have individual, individual conversations, we go through an individual questionnaire that we have with you, we will have community forums that we do, you decide the community forums, how many will help you go through the process of making sure that we've included as many of the cross-section of this community as possible, whether it's a faith-based organization, it's a chamber of commerce, definitely, of course, we're talking about parents and teachers and administrators. So we're talking about the individuals that you say these are important groups and we need to hear from them. We're here to help you facilitate through this, through this process so it doesn't become too cumbersome because it can get very, very cumbersome. And so, what you're going to help us do is to provide us with those ingredients that you believe and your community believes is going to lead your district for the next five to 10 years. Our average superintendent is, well, let me, let me just go through the process and stick to this because I get excited about what I think are important things, but the, the, as we go through this, we pay very close attention to detail. That's why we have staff because we want to take a lot of those responsibilities away from the people that already have jobs in this district. Now, we will ask for a contact person and we will ask that we have communication, ongoing communication through email and phone calls and text messaging, whatever other medium you, you choose with the person that you choose or you say is going to be the point contact, it's usually the board president. So experience, we're all highly experienced, many of our associates are retired superintendents, deputy superintendents, some of them even practicing superintendents and they go from, let's say Wyoming to Colorado and help in, in a Colorado search. But one of the things that we say is, it's your search. We're going to have, we're going to help you navigate through the search process. We'll have the individual board interviews, the board determines, the stakeholder groups, we've talked about this, the timeline, the compensation. Once the board finalizes a profile, then our organization kicks into action. We start recruiting individuals. You know, we post this, we'll advertise, but we've always believed that some of the best superintendents in Texas and in the country already have a job. Some of these folks are not looking for a job. So it's our job to convince them that the qualities that they possess match with the qualities that'll make a great superintendent in this district that you've identified. So we have this network where we do this, we'll get people that will apply and we don't turn away anybody. The only restriction that we have is you must meet the criteria for qualifying and we start that with an application process. We have a search, research-based characteristics. When we hold community forums, we will actually have hard copies that we give to individuals of these 33 qualities that they want to see in a superintendent and they get to pick 10. We'll compile all of this, we'll tell you, these are the top 10 that they're asking for. Now, some boards have said, I want to include these other two that were high up there and that's fine with us. Some boards may say, I want to tweak this one and change it a little bit because I want this to be very clear about what we're looking for and we can do that. We also have the, the, the website, through your website and our website where we will advertise to people to give us their input. And there are two things, the 33 qualities and there's, there's also a section there that we call anecdotal notes because they may want to say something that may not be part of the 33 qualities. And so, all of this information, we will compile and you'll get every one of them. The survey focus groups, board determines profile characteristics, the recruitment that we do aggressively across the country and particularly in Texas. The candidate pool, we will go through all the vetting process. We will bring you eight to 12 that have met every criteria. The other thing that we'll do is those eight to 12 that meet the criteria, they have the qualifications, you'll get a chance to preview a brief little video as we're, as you're going through their application and resume and references and all of this, you'll actually get to see them answering three questions. So those, you, from, from the paperwork that you have in front of you, from the video that you see, you get to see them, see how they think on their feet, how they respond and articulate and communicate. So you'll get a chance to see that. I think we're probably, we started that several years ago. I think there's one more national company that's picked up on it and said, we want to do that too. And that's fine, that's okay. So you'll get a chance to see, to see them in action before you actually decide, these are the five or six that we want to spend money to bring in. We have criminal checks, like I said, we do a lot of vetting, we, we have folks that will, that will work day and night, once the deadline is, is done, they'll work day and night to look at websites, to look at, we talk to references and their references. We make, we want to make sure that when we bring this list of candidates for you, there are no surprises. We're deliberate, we have interviews and final, final selection, we assist the district to reach contractual agreement, we provide a board self-assessment, a self-survey at, at the end. So we build, we want to make sure that we, we build into what we go out and advertise, the ingredients that you as the community, as a board are looking for. And so in the package, you'll also find our base price and our base price is one for the size of district. We just got through, we just got through, I'd say, a few months ago, we finished Waukesha Hatchie, Harold and I and so it's based on the price, the more students, the price. Then it doesn't include the, the expenses and because we live so close, you know, Harold can buy a, buy me a Whataburger when I come down. So, yes, this is, this is what we, it's what we do. What I want to say and Harold and I talked about it earlier, is what are those unique differences that we bring forward? Number one, we take very careful in the process and the steps that we, that we take, we're very careful and we're very professional about this. Secondly, we're going to bring you some of the best quality candidates. And there's a list of references that you'll have in your packet. You can call either one of those board presidents, board members and ask them what they thought about our service. And you see, we're very deliberate, we're very detailed, we make sure that no stone has left them unturned, but most importantly, we're here to listen. We're here to listen and that's why it's so important that, that we're here for those, those constituent meetings. I'm not going to go through the highlights, I think that's the end of the presentation. Harold, anything else you would add?
I would just emphasize that the fact that we go through and check these people so careful, our intent is we don't want you to get a bad one. And I think that we do a much better job of that than what a lot of the other companies do because we do have people that are checking those backgrounds and as he said, whether there's Facebook, Twitter, Snapchat, whatever, we look into all of those and see what we, what we can find because we don't want any surprises, we don't want you to have any surprises when they get here. So the candidates that we bring you are going to be good qua, quality, solid individuals that can jump in and do the job. But again, it's going to come down, this is your search. We're not here to tell you who you ought to hire, we're going to try to make sure that when you hire that person, that it's the ones that you, the one that you really want and it's going to be somebody that's going to fit into your community and they're not going to be bringing a bunch of skeletons in their closet when they come.
So our goal is going to be to bring you some top-notch candidates where you're going to have a difficult job finding that one person. That's our goal.
Awesome. Well, thank you for that presentation. It's very informative. I, I just have a clarifying question or two about your cost sheet, your estimated cost sheet. It does not, your bottom line price does not, or basic, baseline price does not include the advertisement cost and that's an additional $5,000?
It's an estimate, it's an estimate and you'll get a chance to decide, we'll bring you all these sites that, and the cost for each one of them and you decide, I want to do AASAA, I want to do, but many of the, many of the sites are free and so, and many superintendents and aspiring superintendents will go to some of these websites, so, but there are some that will have a cost. We're, we're guestimated, a lot depends on, and we'd like to kick it up a little bit because you may decide, I want to run in Ed Week and they're the most expensive for two weeks. You may decide that's not important and so the cost will go down.
And the other question I have is, could you talk about the candidate expense for interviews? What is, what does that involve? Is, is that, I see $2,000, it's estimated for $2,000 per interview. Is that just, can you talk a little bit more about that?
Typically, you pay the cost for the candidate to come interview and it just depends on where they're coming from. In other words, it depends on who you select and where they may be located, but it's usually something that, that you do.
Okay. And that's in addition to the baseline cost, right?
Yes.
Okay. Does board have any other questions? No?
Yeah, definitely.
Yes?
Definitely. All right. Hi, my name's Chris. Chris Flur. Tell me the Belton story, right, from your perspective right now, right? So, so if I'm an aspiring superintendent, why do I want to come to Belton?
You can't come to a better district. I want to tell you something that when I came here, I'd known Joe Pirtle for some time, but he did a great job of creating an atmosphere here for students, a caring and taking care of people like no other place that I'd ever been. And you have to work at that to maintain that. If you don't, you lose it. I think that it is something great, I think that Belton has it and I hope that it's always here at Belton, but it's something, I know that, that Mr. Pirtle played a large part in that, I know that the teachers and staff here played a part in it and I know that our community played a huge part in that because they're all a caring community.
On the flip side of that, oh, are you going to add to that?
I was just going to add that one of the questions that we ask your constituents is what makes this district so great? And so, what we take to the candidates as we're going out and recruiting, they're going to ask us that question and we'll be- is, what makes this district so great? And so, what we take to the candidates as we're going out and recruiting, they're going to ask us that question. And we'll be prepared because your community is going to say all the wonderful things, and we're not going to make these things up. Because Carol, I mean, Harold here knows a lot about the district, and that's the first thing. Candidates want to come to a place where they know they're going to stay for a while, and they can fit into that community.
On the flip side of that question, I mean, what do you think some of the challenges for us, you know, are going to be for attracting a superintendent here?
I don't think you're going to have a problem, and can you hear me from... I don't think you're going to have a problem in attracting candidates to this job. I think that there are a lot of people around the state that are well aware of what you have here in Belton. The issues that you're going to have, as you well know, is growth, is managing that growth and maintaining that small-town atmosphere and that caring about kids. Because that's really what it's all about. But I'll also tell you this, and, you know, Mr. Pirtle and I are the only two superintendents that have ever been in Belton that were former president of the Association of School Administrators. And both of us have been very well-known statewide. And so, that in itself will help me attract people for you, just in that situation. And I will also be the first to tell you, there's going to be a lot of people that may end up playing these, that I'm going to know them, that I may have crossed paths with them. Because I was thinking the other day, I think I've probably got somewhere close to a hundred people out there that have been superintendents that have served under me. I think that, right here in Belton, I think there's about eight that have served as superintendent either here or somewhere else from the time that, you know, that I was at Belton. But when you spend thirty-five years as a school superintendent, a lot of people know who you are. It's just like, I know personally the three that just left here.
Yeah. When it comes to the process, right, so I said earlier, I don't want to see eighty-three or eighty-four people, right? So it sounds like you're going to present us with, you know, eight to twelve of the top candidates. So how are we going to know that that candidate's right for us? Like, how are you going to know that that candidate's, our candidate, is in that eight to twelve?
I'm going to tell you this, I don't think that we're going to know that that's the candidate that you need. But we're going to know that the ones that we're bringing you have those characteristics that you can select that one. But it, again, it's that process, and it is like a marriage, and it's, you don't get to go on a date with these people. So you need someone to tell you that they know what they're doing. Because some people can talk a good game, and they may not really know how to do it. But they've been around enough that they know to speak the language. And so, we're going to break that down for you too. But I think, and one of the things that, the video, I can tell you, the video will let you get a good feeling of whether you think this is one of the candidates that you want or not. And then, the way that you go about selecting it, because we don't show you those candidates and then say, what do y'all think? And there may be one person or two people on there that lead the parade, and so, whichever direction they go, oh yeah, oh yeah, that, me too, me too. Each one of you is going to evaluate each candidate. And we're going to give you back that sheet that's going to tell you, you'll know who you voted for, because you'll know what your number is. You won't know who necessarily voted for, but you'll see how everyone actually rated that candidate. And that's very, very important. Because too many times, things happen where someone throws out a good idea, and, you know, people are not fully engaged, and they say, yes, 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 and then that later was, who came up with that? Wasn't me. Wasn't me. So, the process is excellent, and I do think that it will lead you to the very best candidates. And I can tell you, I can tell you that, being through this process, I've seen some board members very stressed over this process when it gets down to it. Because they like strawberry ice cream, and they like vanilla ice cream, and they like whatever else, you know? So it becomes difficult. But that's our job, is to bring you people that are that high quality so that you can make that final decision.
I think what's important for you to know is, and I'm glad that Harold brought it up, and that has to do with that rubric. That rubric will help build consensus among you. And I've seen this done so many different times that, in the end, you're going to come together in deciding who you're going to bring in to interview. This rubric is going to be used throughout the whole process, up to the very last person that... I mean, it'll help you build consensus.
I mean, I keep going.
No? You're fine. You have more? I'm sure we all have another question or two. You just let us know when you want us to join your meeting.
By the way, Neapolitan's got three different flavors, so I'm good with that. On the usage of the video interview, right, that's kind of interesting. We've started to see that in the corporate world a little bit. I mean, have you found candidates shy away and kind of walk away from the process because of that interview, or are people accepting of that?
I think most people are accepting of that. What I find is that some of these individuals in the video don't exude that kind of strength, what they bring to the table. What the paper is telling you, they get a little shy. I don't know why it happens, but it does. And some of those candidates that I, Harold, I think, man, this one is just a great candidate. And then, you see the videos, well, that didn't go too well, did it?
Is it a one-take thing, right? You get one shot at it?
They get, I think they get two shots at it.
Okay. Okay.
So you're saying the video could be a detriment to it, isn't it?
I think it is three, but it's a timed one. And the one, the thing that we're going to tell you before you watch those videos, don't be expecting a performance that's going to be an Academy Award winner. That's not what you're really looking for. You're looking for that substance that the person is going to bring to you.
Right. So just two more, I swear. What do you think the duration looks like, right? So from, you know, from the time that we start to the time that we, you know, have the eight to twelve, or however many candidates it is, right? What does that duration look like?
I'm going to tell you what I used to tell my board members when they'd say, how long is this meeting going to last? And say, how long are y'all going to talk?
Hold on, I'm taking that personally.
What I'm telling you is, that's going to, again, depend on you. But it's going to run about a three to four month.
Is that on average kind of what it looks like?
That's pretty much average, about three to four months, depending on how fast you want to move through it yourselves, and what other conflicts. Because what you end up finding out is, you get started in this, we're going to have a meeting, oh, we can't do that because we've got this activity going on, and we've got to be there, and so we can't do it here. Well, I can't do it this time. So all of that comes into play.
Okay.
But it's your search. I want to emphasize that too.
Right, right. And so, this is my last one. I said ahead, too, this is not my last one. So during the time that you're recruiting and building the pool and working through that pool, what do you need from us, right? What do you need from the seven of us during that time?
The first part of the process, you'll be very involved. When, once we recruit individuals, once that window for, the application closes, and you want, we've set this date, you've set this date, we want to be able to hold our first review of the ten to twelve that you're bringing us. You decide eight to ten, twelve. That, once we have that date, and we usually ask for at least thirty-day window, gives us enough time to recruit, and then we work from there. And so, I would say that, once you decide, we want to bring the... We begin with the end in mind. When do you want the superintendent here to take over? Is it in January? Is it in December? Is it in May? So once you decide, this is when we want the superintendent, then we work backwards, and we'll be able to give you a better timeline with that. But we're very flexible about it too, when you start and when you finish.
And let me say something in there. We're going to personally interview each one of you, and that is the start of the process. That will give us a lot of data. Once we do that, will give us a lot of information that we need.
Okay, so that thirty-day period, when we're out recruiting and vetting and checking references, there'll be little other than whatever questions come to you from constituents, you filter through us. Because we don't want people coming to you directly and saying, I want you to do this and this and this, when you look at a candidate. Say, here's the number, and it'll be on the website, here's the number and the email address, you can contact these individuals. If you want a cell phone number, you have Harold, you have me. Once that thirty-day period is over, then it's back to work.
Can you talk a little bit about the application process? How does one apply? Are you going to have like a link on our website, or what's that going to look like?
The application will be on our website. If you want it on your website, we will put it on your website.
So if someone were to ask us, where do we apply? That would be the link we would, wherever we would need to send them to, that would be the response we would need from you all.
We typically want them to apply through our website. Because that's where all of this resumes and letters of interest, everything's going to be downloaded into the website, and we've got it set up to where that's where they do it. So, I don't know if you're set up to do something like this, but it would be easier for us to handle all the ones that applied. Because this way, they can upload all their information through there.
Okay. And just thinking about the applicants and what you said earlier about if somebody came up and asked a question, one of our constituents, how do we keep this process confidential? We don't want, you know, these applicants, those names out there, especially since we're just going to be in the vetting process. So what's your process for keeping this confidential?
Folks that apply for this job, particularly sitting superintendents, they're going to want everything to be confidential. And so, we're going to make it very clear from the very beginning to your constituents that this is a competent, very confidential process, where they have input is through the survey, through the constituent meetings. That's where they're going to have their input and tell us what they want, what they're looking for. Every once in a while, we will let them know, if you have someone that you want us to look at, or if you're thinking of something later that you forgot to tell us, here's where you go to give us that information.
Awesome. Board have any other questions?
Bring that information to us if someone, if there's questions about candidates, because it is very, very important that we maintain confidentiality. Because, again, if the word gets out that they may be looking, all of a sudden, they're going to say, no, I'm not looking, I'm not interested, and then you might be losing a great candidate.
Any other questions from the board?
Real quick, I was looking over the list of schools. How long have y'all operated in Texas?
I started in 2015. Colleen was done right before I joined. And then, but I can't tell you how far back we've done in Texas. I've got a list, I don't know if it's in your packet, a list of all the Texas districts. What we can do is go and get what date we did these superintendent searches, or these high-level position searches, and have them sent to you.
Okay.
And I've only been with Rain Associates for this year, but I've been doing superintendent searches. When I had my first job in seventy-seven, I was leaving in seventy-nine, I actually did the search for the district that I was leaving.
Twenty fifteen was a big year. We did Austin, Fort Worth, Plano, and Lewisville, one right after the other.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other?
Yes. You had mentioned earlier that the attributes and skill sets are determined by interviewing us and conducting community forums. Tell me about your last community forum that you conducted and how it was done.
The last one was at Waukesha Hatchie. We were set up with two rooms, and we had a recorder in each room that recorded everything, and they did an excellent job, by the way they were provided, those two individuals were provided by the district. But we started that morning about eight o'clock, and we finished that night about eight o'clock. And Robert did some on one side, and I did some on the other side, and there were different times when people didn't show up, or there was a small group that would actually bring them together. But the process is very, very good. They were able to capture all of that, and once our staff takes that, they organize that. And again, that data compiles much more so than what a lot of the other firms do. I know that some of the other firms come in, and they'll do one, and they'll present you with a profile by the end of the day, and I don't know how they do it. Because ours is actually sent back to the office, and they run this through the programs to give us all that data. We had all things online, I think. Robert was the first one to catch it. Person had written a quite lengthy thing there, and then said, if you're reading at this point, call this number and I'll give you $10. And I think we had six people, but nobody took the money.
I think what they were thinking, or this particular person was thinking, is that we don't read this information. We'll, and once we read it, we go through it, if there's anything, issues that arise, we bring them to you. Obviously, you'll get a chance to read the same thing we read. We don't take anything out, we tell it just the way it's said or the way it's written.
But we do use, I want to emphasize, we do use that information that we collect. There is a process.
I think I have a bird's eye view of your process. Going back to the applicants, do we get to view all applicants, or do you guys start making the cuts based upon what information you have obtained through us and the community?
We will bring you the names of all the people in the districts and their positions that applied for the job. We will pick the ten to twelve that mirror your profile. If for some reason you feel like this person meets the profile because you've seen them in action, you've talked to them, or whatever the case may be, they will bring that person, put them in there, you get to see all the information. Now, if you want to see all of the eighty-five or however many people fill out the application, I wouldn't suggest that. And I'll tell you why, because somebody may complete it, and they've only had one-year experience as a assistant director. And that may not be part of the criteria that's been selected. And so, we, there's people that are teachers, that are principals, that apply for the job. We will vet those out based on the criteria. So what we're planning on doing is bringing you the ten to twelve, and then if you decide, I want to see these three, we'll bring those to you as well. But we're going to stand by the ten to twelve that we bring you. Because by then, there would have been an exhaustive vetting process. And we know that these people, whatever it is that has been said out there, has been honest, and there's integrity behind it.
If you want to give us the name of a person, we will reach out to those individuals and ask them to apply. And we will look at their credentials. But we just want to make sure that they are who they say they are, and that they have the skills that they claim to have.
And so, will you all be working with the board if you were hired prior to... And so, will you all be working with the board if you were hired prior to your recruitment to understand what we would be looking for as the board, as far as those criterias? You know, so as you're going through those applications?
We do that when we, once we have met with, with all the different groups that you want us to meet with, we'll bring all that data back, and it will be broken out into themes of what was said. And then you will look at that, and you'll say, yes, I agree with that, or no, I don't agree with that, whatever it may be. And you'll help us build that profile of that individual.
We, we start with individual board interviews. That's where it all begins. And from then on, it's, we guide you through this process. We'll tell you, here are some options. Here's what works well. This is what may not work well. Contingent on what we've heard from you and what we've heard from the community. There are some, some boards that would like, or some search firms that would tell the board then, if you want to go make a site visit, we don't encourage that. But if you want to do it, we need to let the candidates know upfront. Because once that happens, and we reveal the top three names, or the, then, we'll let you know, this candidate is going to, is not going to move forward. Or this candidate decided that they're a little reluctant, they're going to need some convincing. You're going to run that risk. And that's where we bring in the experience. That's where we guide you. But you're going to have to make that choice. You're going to have to make that decision. We'll tell you why we think it's not wise to do this. And we'll tell you why this works so much better. But then you'll decide.
Okay. Just to make sure I heard that right, you all do not encourage onsite visits when we get down to the final, or the lone, or whoever it might be, final two, whatever that number is? You all do not encourage that?
If the top three individuals are sitting superintendents in another district, they're not going to risk their board saying, so you want to leave? Why don't you leave now? And they don't get the job? You've lost that candidate.
Okay. Awesome. Any other questions?
Let me emphasize it. If you want to do that, then that's still within your power.
Yes. We just need to let them know upfront, so they are not surprised, either.
Fair enough. I don't believe we have, Jeff has one.
One more question as far as the, I know that we'll have the advertising expense. So that will obviously attract candidates to the search. But do y'all have superintendents who are on file with y'all already, that keep their name with y'all, using y'all as their search form for their next job? I know many of them do, and so I'm just curious.
We will have a database of superintendents that have applied from all over the country. But when we start a new search, we start from the beginning. Even if you've had an application, because every district is unique, and the qualifications that you're seeking may be different than what they applied before. So we start from the beginning with all of them.
Okay, thanks.
And usually those that are in that category are, will be somebody that maybe moved off to another state, wants to come back to Texas, or has some reason for that.
Any other questions? Well, thank you all so much for entertaining our questions and giving us such a great presentation and coming down and chatting with us. Is there anything you all want to leave us with before we adjourn for closed session?
Go ahead.
I want you to hire a great superintendent. Because I'm very proud to say that I was superintendent at Belton, and we've had great superintendents here. And I want you to continue that process.
We welcome the charge. Thank you so much.
I just have, I just have a question.
Thank you all for coming.
I have a couple of questions, if you don't mind. Question is, when are you, do you anticipate to make a decision on the search firm?
We don't know. We have some discussions to take place here in a closed session here in a little bit. We may or may not get there, so can't promise you that tonight.
Okay. Because would you like for us to stay and answer more questions when you come back?
I believe you've answered, you've, you've answered a lot of good questions. And certainly, if we have more, we'll reach out. But I think at this point, we just need to have some deliberations.
Good. Okay. And that was it? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Okay. It is 6:36, and the board will go into closed session to discuss personnel. Texas Government Code, Section 551.074. 7:35, and we'll reconvene at open session. The next item on our agenda says to consider, discuss, and take appropriate action regarding selection of superintendent search firm. We deliberated, and we're not ready to make that decision this evening. We expect to make that decision on, at our next regular board meeting, which will be September 16th. So at this time, the board will take no action on item number six. Nothing further. We are adjourned. Thank you all.